To the regular scheduled meeting of the common council of the city of Hudson for Monday, February 27, 2012. If you would join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Burchill?
Here.
District one, Morsette?
Here.
District two, Yakub?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, Hoggatt is absent. District six, Vanslow?
Here.
At this time, we'll take comments and suggestions from citizens present on any item that's not on the agenda. So I think we have, Marty, would you like to address the?
I'll let you go first. Thank you, sir. Just two items I wanted to bring up in front of the council. One is to remind the citizens of Hudson, we're expecting snow on Tuesday and Wednesday, and it depends on what TV station you listen to, if it's six to 12 inches or it's one to three inches. But if we get over two inches of snow, the city's going to declare a snow plowing event. This last one last week, we ticketed almost 50 vehicles. We want to make sure that everybody's aware of it. If there's two inches of snow on the ground, make sure your vehicle stays off the street until it's plowed curb to curb. We don't want to have a repeat of last week. We don't want to ticket any more vehicles than we possibly can. And then if you get a second one or a third one, your vehicle's, it's going to cost you $50 and your vehicle possibly could get towed off the street. So encourage everybody to make sure they keep an eye on the forecast, and if you get over two inches, please make sure you stay off the street. The second thing I want to bring up is Hudson Police Department has now initiated a Facebook page. If you get a chance, please take a look at it. We're going to use it to notify the citizens of any activities that we've got going on within the department, events within the city. I intend to use it to notify people of detours events, such as when this fall, when the Stillwater Lift Bridge goes out, we'll notify people on Facebook, this is the date it's going to start, this is the predicted date it's going to end. You might want to look at alternate traffics. We'll probably use it for notifying people parade activity, or if there's any special activities that are going on within the city of Hudson, just to let people know what's going on. And then to give them an opportunity to comment on anything that we have going on within the city itself. So I just wanted to make aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any items that are not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on. Madam Clerk, consent agenda, please.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February 6, 2012, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $4,624,170.64. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of four regular operators licenses for the period February 28, 2012 to June 30, 2013, and the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used on March 9, 2012, at the Knights of Columbus Fish Fry, and the issuance of two temporary operator's licenses to be used March 30 through April 1, 2012, at the Hudson Hockey Association HHA season meltdown. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the Fire Department DNR memorandum of understanding for mutual aid and fire suppression services as submitted. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B and Class B retailers license to the Hudson Hockey Association to sell beer and wine on Saturday, March 31, 2012, for the HHA season meltdown celebration at 1820 Hanley Road. To approve the 2012 room tax grants of $2,000 to the Hot Air Affair and $1,000 to the FIP Center for the Arts as recommended by the Room Tax Grant Board. To approve the issuance of a special event permit to Mike Bongers for the 2012 Gopher to Badger Race Event in Lakefront Park on August 11, 2012. To approve the issuance of a secondhand article and secondhand jewelry dealer's license to Nathan A. Turnquist doing business as North Country Gold and Silver Company at 1920 Crestview Drive. To approve the renewal and issuance of a six-month Class B beer license to the Hudson Softball Association to sell beer at the concession building in Grand View Park, 1100 Carmichael Road, from May 1, 2012 to October 31, 2012. To approve the issuance of two temporary Class B licenses to the Knights of Columbus St. Croix Council 1762 to sell beer at 1500 Vine Street for Casey Fish Fry Events on Friday, March 9 and Friday, March 30, 2012. To approve the renewal of the Cooperative Fire Protection Agreement between the Hudson Fire Department and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, St. Croix Wetland Management District. To approve the Dashford Dad's 5K Foot Race at Prospect Park on Saturday, June 16, 2012. To approve barricading Walnut Street between First Street and Second Streets for Yellowstone Trail Car Show on May 12, 2012, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. To approve changing the speed limit on Cooley Road between 11th Street and 14th Street from 30 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. To approve the installation of a stop sign at the southeast corner of 7th Street at Malaloo Drive, and to review the matter in four months.
Will you pull that one?
To approve the 2012 Grand View Park concession agreement with the Hudson Softball Association for the period May 1, 2012 to October 31, 2012. To place on file the meeting minutes and results indicating 32 antlerless deer harvested in the 2011 through '12 deer control program. To approve scheduling the July 2012 council meeting dates to Monday, July 9 and Monday, July 23. To place on file the quarterly report of the Water Utility Director, the monthly report of the Finance Officer, and the February 14, 2012 minutes of the Public Utilities Commission. Vanslow.
Move for approval.
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the request to waive the Lakefront Park reservation fee for Raise the Wolf Dog Walk Event to be held June 16. Finance Committee recommended that we deny that request and send it back to public safety.
And I'll just explain a little bit. I know Lee's on Park Board and you might be curious. We just felt like there's a lot of nonprofit groups that come and use the park. We have a special rate for nonprofit groups, and if we're going to start waiving the fee for one, where does it end? If we need to revisit the fee that we've set, we should do that. I prefer that route rather than waiving for some, not for others. I mean, some people may not know they can request that it's waived, so I just, I don't know that we have any good rationale to choose one nonprofit over another and waive the fee.
Well, we can send it back to Park Board and have, we've got a Park Board meeting coming up, and have them revisit it.
Are there other, I guess what I'm wondering is, are there other nonprofits that have come to Park Board and asked for?
Not this year. They haven't in previous years.
And I was just saying, you know, I'd rather we have a policy and we stick with it, and it's the beginning of the year, so if we just kind of say this is our blanket policy, they can have the event somewhere else, or not use the ban shell, or, but, you know, either we have a nonprofit rate, or maybe we need to lower it. I don't know.
What's the regular rate for the ban shell?
About $130, isn't it? For the nonprofit.
Nonprofit. No, but for a regular, I just can't remember, it's like 300 or?
I want to say 250, 260, something like that.
Yeah, it's up there. So it's quite a significant reduction.
275.
Yeah, I thought it was close to 300, so it's a significant reduction, $130.
I mean, we charge churches when they use it, and I don't know. I think we have to be careful in that, to favor any groups.
We can take it back to Park Board and have them re-review it, see if there's any, obviously, we've done it for groups who are raising money for special causes, which is not really associated here, but we'll.
Have we though?
I don't recall that either, doing.
I think we did this one last year, I think.
Yeah.
We did this one.
Absolutely. And that's why they came back and asked for it this year, because we went through the.
And you know what?
The approval process.
I remember being hesitant doing this last year, though last year it came to council without even a security deposit, and I requested, I pulled it and requested that we at least put a security deposit on, and I would have wanted more, but.
Okay. So we need to. Go back to Park Board?
We'll go back to Park Board, we'll have them re-review it.
Was it going to go to Safety or Park Board?
Sure, it should go to Safety, for sure.
Well, it should go to, well, if it's a question of using the park and the cost for the parks, I think it should go to Park Board. If it isn't a question of Safety, it's a question of usage and cost for our parks.
Well, I think we're going to have a discussion about that, because we approved, we just had the foot race down there, and we went to public safety with it. Why didn't it go to Park Board?
We have dogs in the park. I think it's a safety issue.
And Safety didn't feel there was an issue with it from a safety perspective. But this is more of a financial question for the Park Board.
Who didn't feel, was it, it never came to Safety to decide if it was an issue or not.
I don't think it's been to Safety.
It's never come to front of Safety.
What hasn't been, I thought, okay, I thought this one's been through Safety also. But it needs to go back to Park, so that it can, Park Board needs to provide a justification that, better than what the justification you have here on this paper, that's all. And if they really feel that it should be waived, then the Park Board can say, this is the reason. Otherwise, they can say, we agree with you.
Okay. And I think it should go to Safety is, I don't know, is there, how many dogs are going to be there that day?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought, I was thinking it already came through Safety.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. Next, establish a storm water utility ordinance number 1-12 and proposed rates resolution 112.
I'll introduce it, and Neil, if you'll come up too. We've been talking about the storm water utility within Public Works and as a full council for a few months, and Neil has done a tremendous amount of work in this regard and has laid out a number of different scenarios as far as how we might charge residences versus commercial properties. I think we got that ironed out. We've looked at the language of it, and the ordinance that you have before you does have a provision in it that requires that Public Works review the utility each year by July 31 and makes a recommendation to full council. And then we, at our finance meeting, added the language that the full council would have to approve that, the continuation of the utility.
Well, make a decision on the committee's recommendation.
Right. So it would require that the council votes every year.
And then it would come up at the next regular council meeting.
Right.
They would have to make a decision.
Since we last saw this as a full council, Neil also added quite a bit of additional information about how commercial properties can apply for credits, adjustments or credits if they are providing for dealing with storm water on their own facility. So I think, I think a tremendous amount of work has been done on it, and it's, I think we've had a lot of good debate surrounding it. The reality is we're facing new requirements and regulations around MS4 and how we need to deal with our storm water. You know, it's something that we need to start doing. There's not really money in the general fund for some of these new activities. That being said, we'd like to think that some of these things can be addressed upfront. The assessment of the storm water system can be assessed, and then gradually we can start rolling some of the maintenance into the general fund. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Neil and let him add whatever he'd like, because I skimmed the surface.
Yeah, I think probably the most important addition on and beyond the, you know, the provision to have an annual review of this for both its operation and the need to continue it, because some of the reason, you know, obviously, we are under levy limits, and therefore, if those happen to disappear or loosened up, some of this could transition back to the general fund, and that can be done on an annual basis. The July date was set so that it could be incorporated into the normal budget process. The language that Lori had referred to with regard to corrections, adjustments, and credits, what it does, what it tries to do is, as best as possible, to balance or to give some recognition and some credit to those businesses that really don't contribute to the problem. The basic ordinance and the charge is based upon a unit called a residential equivalent unit, and it had, the resolution provides for tiers for commercial properties. There are some commercial properties, particularly those that have been developed since the mid 2000s, where the Department of Natural Resources regulations require infiltration of 80% of pre-development storm water. Those businesses are not contributing to the storm water in terms of the quantity of flow that other businesses that are older are, and consequently, they should be, you know, given some type of credit or a reduced fee. And the language in here, I think, does provide that. So it, you know, it will, it probably, you're never going to get a perfect system, but I think this gives a sufficient amount of recognition to those that aren't contributing to the problem, and that those who are contributing are being treated at least as fairly as possible in a relationship to what they contribute.
So I'll open it up to Lee and Mary, because the rest of us have had plenty, and if you have anything else, but Lee and Mary, you're first to go, whoever wants.
Go ahead.
Ladies first.
Okay. My biggest concern before the meeting was the language, so I really appreciate that finance took that into consideration, that we're going to be rewriting, that we're going to review it every year and let the council vote. I too, like, would, like Rich would like to see his sunset, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to bark up that tree, because you're, makes, what Catherine's saying makes sense. However, I do think that when our, when budget, when we look at capital projects coming up here soon, that we need to take a strong, hard look at what we need in the city and what we don't need, because we need to start setting some money aside for these, the issues that we're about to face in the future. And I don't, I'm, I mean, I'm not thrilled about this, it's a tax, I don't like it, but I know we have to do it. So, I mean, I'm going to, I have my support, but I want to take a strong, hard look at some of the capital projects that are more of a want than a need in the next year here, the next few months.
Okay. Lee?
For people who have just seen this or heard about this for the first time, I thought it would be really important to lay out for the individual homeowner, what are we talking about? Talking about a million dollars a year here, are we talking about a dollar a year? And the way I read this, correct me if I'm wrong, it's basically $7.50 per quarter, which is $30 a year.
Correct.
So I want to make sure that when this gets out into the public, it's clear how much we're talking about per unit. And then when you look at some of the very large businesses, they're being charged 100 residential equivalent units, because they have a lot more runoff, as Neil pointed out. So I believe that the layout here is, is very reasonable, with everybody contributing a little bit to solving the problem.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
I just want to, I want to thank you, Neil, because I know I've called you probably, I don't know how many times on this issue, because I can never make the Public Works meetings when they were scheduled, so thanks for.
You're welcome.
I tried to get like 10 different scenarios to work, but, so.
Randy? Anything?
No, I, you know, I've said my piece, I think.
Okay. Rich? Anything?
Know where I stand. I mean, you know, you know what my feelings are and what my thoughts are.
All right. What's the council's preference? Do we want to suspend rules? Do we want to, first reading? It's your choice.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. Is there a second to suspend the rules?
I'll second.
For the ordinance first.
For the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslow?
No.
Wyland?
No.
Passes 3-2. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I think you need a two-thirds vote on, to suspend.
Okay.
Move for first reading.
And, well, we can wait for a second.
Is there a second? Okay.
The reason we voted to suspend the rules was, we've already had a first reading.
Yeah, it has come to the council before. My recommendation was it's changed or heads additional provisions that weren't in the original ordinance, so I recommended either suspending the rules to adopt it tonight or a first reading. But it has been at the council before, it's just got additional language that wasn't there before.
And that's the reason I felt that it seemed like there isn't time critical, that we could spend one more meeting letting the public see it and listen to it.
The only language, sorry.
Go ahead.
The only language we've changed is that the, we made it more strict for the council to review it every year, which is more beneficial to the public, so I don't.
And we added the credits.
Well, we added, yeah, the credits are new, which is.
And we added credits, again, more beneficial to the public. Nothing that's detrimental has been added, I think, which is why I've given it more support than I have in the past meetings, so, I mean, Rich is not going to vote suspend rules because he doesn't want it at all, so.
But all it does is bring it to a vote, right? He can, I mean.
Oh, he still gets to.
Yeah, he still gets to vote.
Vote on whoever he wants.
But we have a 3-2 vote, we need a majority, we need four to go to.
To suspend.
Yeah, to suspend the rules. Oh, we may need four, yeah.
We need four for the ordinance as well.
Right, four, to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
So.
I'll make a motion for first reading then.
Okay.
I already made that motion, okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the first reading?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Skip the resolution.
I guess we can skip the resolution.
Well, you might as well do a first reading on that, just so next time we're clear.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 1-12, the first reading?
Move for first reading on Resolution 1-12.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Did I skip something? Yep. Approval of a contract for Civic Plus for website development. Lee, you pulled that?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about this contract, and maybe Mike can help me answer them. There was a line in here that says, "Client understands that the pricing and related discount structure provided under this agreement assumes such perpetual permission." And the way I read that is that their name, Civic Plus, powered by Civic Plus, will be on our website in perpetuity. I felt that that, that maybe need to be clarified to say, as long as we currently have this contract in place with them, their name will be on the website. It may just be a technicality, but on the other hand, I want to make sure that when we get done paying for this, we own it, lock, stock, and barrel, if you will.
Well, those are two different questions. We've got a hosting agreement and maintenance, so forth, 3,000 some every year, and I think that's what you're getting at.
Right.
With this paragraph while the contract is in effect. So if we're, if the city decides to terminate, you know, not use them for hosting and maintenance, I agree, their name should be off, and maybe they intend that, but it doesn't say that specifically, so that makes sense to me.
I just wanted to clear that piece up, and I think that this, Number 23, covers that after we're done paying for it, we own it. The only, the only thing I want to make sure, and I'm sure there's no, you know, otherwise intent here, but that we own the, after we're done developing, we own it, we can continue using them for maintenance, which is beautiful and works great. If we decide to bring the maintenance in-house, or we decide at some point, you know, a number of years down the future, want to make a change, we just aren't stuck.
Right. We have an annual renewable agreement on there, so with 60 days' notice, either side can terminate that, and if we don't do anything, it continues. So the agreement is renewed every year.
And if we can get that change made, that while the contract, contract is in effect, that their name is on the site, I think the rest of the contract looks fine.
Okay. Did you want to ask about codes or anything?
Well, I assumed here, when I read the, that we own the graphic design, web content, web designs, banners, and I assumed that the CMS software that they're using here is everything that we would need to continue development on our own, if we wanted to. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a standalone package. Any other questions? Mary?
I also requested for it to be pulled for probably the opposite reasons of Lee, but, since we're in the spirit of slowing things down tonight. I, I, well, you know, I'm just kind of have a question, if this could go out to bid at all, can we put this out to bid?
We get caught, we file the procedure files.
It did go out to bid.
Yes.
Went out for court.
Went out for court, and how?
We received three quotes for it.
Okay.
The, one was for Gov Office, which developed the North Hudson and the county sites. One was from Wojo's Designs, which developed the EMS, and I don't know if he has the police, is that who did your site? He's, he's, has the EMS site. And then Civic Plus has government, city, county websites all around the area.
Okay, and was that in the paper?
We did publish in the paper, I believe.
We did, we did not?
No, we did not. We're not, we weren't required to under the.
So how, where did it go out?
Was it on our website?
Where was the information where someone would be able to bid on this?
We, we didn't open it for competitive bidding, we needed three quotes on it.
Okay.
So we used three, one local and two largest.
We're looking at someone that had, with the government experience, that type of thing.
Right. Okay, so I guess I have a concern, because I know that I'd been contacted from a local business who wanted to help with our website, and he's been, you know, been here for like the last three months, you know, at the council meetings, and there was no contact given to him that this was even going out for quotes, and I guess if it's not in the paper and not advertised, how would they know?
The procurement policy requires for the amount of the contract that we go out and secure, a minimum of three quotes.
Absolutely, I just didn't, I was, I'm.
What we were looking for when we did that was people that had experience dealing with government websites. That's the process we took.
Did we vote someplace back in the future to redesign our website?
Yep.
Well, the money was, the money was budgeted in 2011, yes.
Yes.
And we did not do it in 2011, so the money carried over.
And the bid was, the money was 20,000?
15.
15,000? And this is 19,000?
Well, the 15,000 is just for the development of the website. The maintenance and that type of thing will come under the annual maintenance budget, so the 13,000, whatever.
And the training will be under the training budget, so, so the development is actually 13,303. Any other questions? Mary?
No, I just have a.
Rich? Anything?
Nope.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I assume you want me to check, make sure that the logo's on there only while the contract's intact.
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if anyone actually made a motion.
Oh, do we? Okay. I'll move that we approve this.
I apologize.
Based on, based on, we know, based on the, on the fact that they will agree to that change in language.
Okay.
In line number 23, or 22.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Alan, can you speak?
Yeah, we'll, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm a local website developer, I work with local developers and designers, and I think choosing a local company, a local organization to develop a custom solution for Hudson would make a lot of sense. My companies with Skoda Systems, I work with designers in town, we're currently, we did the Hudson Chamber of Commerce website and Tourism Bureau sites, and we're making the new ones now. It kind of makes sense that you get a custom solution. The software that you're implementing may end up looking a lot like a lot of other websites that this company does. Hudson's a very unique and distinct community with, you know, the St. Clair River Way and all that. There are people locally who could compete on customization, deliverabilities, and price. And as part of the Hudson Independent Business Association, it'd have been nice if I'd have gotten an RFP. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the solution we chose is not a template-driven solution. It's a complete custom solution. The other two bidders were template-driven, basically you pick a look, and you could make it green or blue or whatever, but this isn't template-driven.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the application of Azul Tequila, Inc., a Reserve Class B and Class B liquor license. I said Class B beer and Class B liquor license. Azula Bar and Grill, twenty-four, twenty-one Hanley Road, recommended from the finance to approve the liquor license. Would you like to come up and do it again? If you would, please.
For those of you who weren't here earlier, my name is Don Myers. I'm with AFT Real Estate in Eau Claire, representing Azul Tequila. And the building that we're talking about is the new but vacant building since it's been built on Carmichael and Hanley Road behind Menards and by Aldi's. And Azul Tequila is proposing to take over fifty-four hundred square feet of it, which is just over a third of the building. And the developer has told us that he also has an insurance man that would take over part of the building, provided we get this first part done. The, we have a signed lease from, by the tenant with us tonight, showing that we've been able to make negotiations with the developer. Provided, it is subject to be able to get this Class B full liquor license. Besides the money that the developer's going to stick into the property as far as improving it, getting it ready for the tenant, the tenant, Azul Tequila, will also be investing an additional three hundred thousand, which I hope shows a strong commitment to the community and to their business. This restaurant, the restaurateurs come with a long family, a long history of restaurant operations. This will be the sixth restaurant, Mexican-style, that their family operates in the state of Wisconsin. And they have other family members that have additional ten restaurants in Kentucky. Besides increasing the tax base on this property, they will be employing between twenty and thirty employees. And if people that have been in the past, you may remember that Azul Tequila had applied for the last open license that was available weeks ago and missed out on that opportunity. We hope tonight that you'll be able to extend the full liquor license to them. They're very excited about opening the restaurant in your town and feel that it'll be a great addition to the many fine dining establishments that Hudson has to offer. And in closing, we would respectfully ask for an additional thirty-day extension from the original ninety days to a hundred and twenty days for them to get open. Part of this is due to the developer needing at least four to six weeks to get his part done. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Is it a full Mexican or Tex-Mex? Can you give us a sample of what's going to be on the menu?
Oh, it's more of a Tex-Mex. But it has the name of Mexican restaurant.
Steaks, burgers, things like that?
Yeah, steaks, burgers. You know, we're going to have a full menu, you know, which will be, you know, Tex-Mex, Mexican, and plus we're going to have like American entries too. And of course, going to be kind of with a full bar. And most of it will be like a family dining area. And, you know, like I say, it will have the bar, but it will be kind of separate from the dining area.
I'll move for approval with the twenty-day, a hundred and twenty-day extension.
Second.
Any other discussion? Lee?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, cents and a hundred and twenty total.
Sorry. I'll second that correctly.
Any other?
Yeah, just had one other question. That leaves us one.
We have two remaining. Correct, Nancy?
That's right. I just want to say I'm very happy, since I still represent that part of the city, that you're coming in, because we've been looking at that building empty for, I think, five years now. So people are very happy.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We look forward to having you join our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to the public works. Our first order of business is update from the Urban Forestry Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and council members, my name is Ken Holman. I live at ten twenty Fillmore Street, about halfway up to Fillmore Hill on the right. It's a yard that you can't possibly fit any more trees in. So. It's my honor to come before you this evening, representing our relatively new Hudson Urban Forestry Board. And our chairman, John Hoggett, is on a much-deserved respite. We have a few other members here, and I'd like to address the work plan that we've developed and answer any questions. And as part of that, to introduce some of the board members that are here, what our responsibilities are, and specifically what activities we have determined our priorities for using the allotted budget. This doesn't look like mine. Well, I just want to open it up to full screen. Oh, down there. Okay. Okay. Thank you. I think you have before you the budget that we're recommending and the different activities. But I'd like to go through a few slides here just to, again, give you a little bit of an overview and some specific pictures and ideas about what these activities mean. A little hard to read here, but the little history, the Urban Forestry Board was established last year in part to meet the requirements of Tree City USA. And we have become officially a Tree City USA, is designated by the National Arbor Day Foundation in Nebraska. We are one of about a hundred and forty tree cities in the state of Wisconsin. And so part of our activities include maintaining that status by having that tree board, organizing an annual Arbor Day celebration with a council-approved, mayor-signed proclamation, and to spend two dollars per capita on tree care for the city, for the public trees. We are soliciting funds constantly for grants, in one case, to create a tree inventory and management plan, Emerald Ash Bore readiness plan. And we will establish ourselves similar to the park board and report to the Public Works Committee. And here's our foul-weather board members, and I'd like to introduce a couple of them that are here today. Maria, Maria Nelson, would you stand up, please? Is one of our original members. Denny Alm is in the back. One of our newer members, Diane Froelker, is here. Would you stand up? And just this evening, Mike Rats has expressed an interest in joining the board. There are a couple other board members that are not here. And so this picture, you'll recognize some of these people. Also, all the folks on the Urban Forestry Board have the reflective vests on. So in the middle is Liz Brooke, and her daughter to the far right is Sarah from the Purple Tree. Oh, boy, I'm having a hard time. There's John Hoggett next to Liz, Diane, or Marie, myself, and Starla Egger of My Sister's Garden. And Councilman Morissette was kind enough to act as master of ceremonies for our celebration last year. So the responsibilities of the forestry board include developing an annual plan of action based on our budget, including a variety of things that I'll get into more detail on. Help the city develop policy and ordinance support, updating the ordinance, developing policy on things like risk tree management. And Catherine will be seeking your legal advice on this policy development as well. We'll continue to seek funding support from a variety of sources that we keep identifying to help supplement the budget with grants. And one of the more important activities will be to provide outreach to the public to help the public understand what it is that we're trying to achieve with the public trees and in that way serve as a good example for what they might do on their own property. The tree inventory summary, this is really difficult to read. I'll go through it quickly. Over nearly fifty-six hundred trees were identified, public property in parks and along the streets, seventeen stumps, and almost nine hundred planting sites, open sites available for planting. Thirty-six, fourteen hundred trees, about twenty-five percent are green or white ash and susceptible to the Emerald Ash Bore. A little bit more, twenty-six percent is represented by maple. And the twenty-five, by ash, so over half the population is represented by two genera of trees. Not very diverse, but overall, we have quite a diverse forest. There are three hundred and fifty-one trees in need of removal for safety reasons, and we'll look at one of those. One hundred and forty-six trees need to be pruned for safety. So both removal and pruning of trees, what we call risk trees, will help improve this green infrastructure that we have. And we see this, our trees, as a public asset and infrastructure, just as much as sidewalks, curb and gutter and the other things. In fact, it will contribute quite a great deal as the forest improves and increases to stormwater management. But we won't get into that tonight, maybe later. So the total appraised value, as determined by the consultant that did the inventory, is over seventeen million dollars. So the action plan priorities for this current calendar year are to prune for structure and safety, removing the highest-risk trees, utilizing that debris, the tree debris, things that are removed while from pruning and removal to maximize the return on that public property. Treatments of ash trees to protect against EAB, and planting a variety of trees to develop a more resilient urban forest and set a good example, as I mentioned, for the residents of Hudson. As with many communities, the public trees represent only about ten or twelve percent of our total population. So most of the urban forest is in private ownership. So here's an example of a tree that needs some pruning. It's actually a pretty good, nicely shaped Siberian elm. People call it Chinese elm, highly resistant to Dutch elm disease. We have many examples of large Siberian elms. There are a lot in Williams Park up on the hill. And this one looks really good from just a short distance, but if you get underneath it and look up, you'll see a couple of dead branches just waiting to fall down onto a car or passing pedestrian. So those are examples of safety pruning. Here's an example of a tree. This is a seven hundred block of Orange Street. You may recognize the residents. And the tree from, again, an untrained eye, may look quite good, and the homeowner would likely say this is in great shape. But you take a close look at this same tree up a little higher, and the cavity nesting birds have really taken advantage of the rot, rotted interior of this tree. Very common in trees that have reached maturity and exceeded it. The funny thing is, what we're finding with Emerald Ash Bore is our woodpeckers are leading us to the pest in that they will seek out the larvae underneath the bark. And so they will fleck the bark, chip away at it, and create a sign for us to look for Emerald Ash Bore. However, these cavity nesters need to find their homes in backyards or in the parks instead of on trees hanging over our streets. The nice thing about this tree, and this is the case in many parts of the older part of town, nice red oak behind it, which will be released and opened up to more sunlight and continue to thrive for probably hundreds of years. Next is an example of a condition that we want to try and avoid, and that's planting trees that will mature higher than utilities that they're planted under. This is along Vine Street. And what's interesting, if you drive down Vine Street going east, just beyond this, the lines go across the street in front of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. And over there, the spruce and other trees have been planted just far enough from the wires that they'll grow to maturity. These were planted directly under the wires, and we want to avoid that. One of the common mistakes that we'll try and teach residents about. This is the old Carnegie Library across the street, and an example of what looks like kind of an ugly tree. This is a Kentucky coffee tree, and a great example of a native tree that is not very prevalent. There are some around town. But we're going to increase the number, the representation of Kentucky coffee trees. Both native and exotic trees, introduced trees. There's a couple of ginkgos across the street here that you may have noticed, and that's another great selection, introduced from China, that has no urban pests, no tree pests right now that we know of. Okay, so the readiness plan includes, or the Ash Bore readiness plan developed by the consultant found that the total value of the ash tree resource, again, the kind of real estate or compensatory value is about four and a half million dollars. We have fourteen hundred public ash, again, twenty-five percent of the population. And the trees are in very good condition. They withstand a variety of soil conditions, and they've been maintained very well. So the public ash are in great shape overall. Hundred fifty-five ash are located in parks, twelve percent, twelve hundred and forty-one are located on the streets and street rights away. The consultant recommended chemically treating, a total of a thousand ninety-five trees with a systemic chemical that kills and protects the tree against any Emerald Ash Bore. But you'll see in our recommendations that we didn't go quite that far. The ash on removal list of risk trees, due to high-risk defect, thirty of them, and trees that are one to six-inch diameter, small ones, that we haven't had much growth in, will be removing and replacing with a greater variety of trees. This is just a map showing the ash tree, all the public ash trees, all the public trees, I'm sorry, the green ones are not ash, the red are ash. And you can see relative to the green public trees, how much is represented by ash. So here is the budget that we're recommending, and I apologize for it not being more legible, but I think you all have a handout of this in your packet. And so what I would point out, the action items on the left, of course, and then two sets of three columns. The first set to be done, work to be done by city crew, and the second three columns, work to be contracted out. So quickly, we have those risk tree removals from a list that is quite long. We've identified sixty-two that are less than fifty feet tall, and the city crew can reach, and another forty-four that need to be contracted out because they're larger. So risk tree pruning, again, thirty-three by the city, forty by under contract. Planting, we have a limited budget on planting, and we've established a BOGO program, buy one, get one, to match funds for public tree planting with residents, and we'll continue that program. We feel that a rather small investment in tree planting will increase the variety, at the same time, not make too much work in maintenance for the crews who have limited time. So totals are fourteen thousand, six hundred seventy-five public costs, thirteen eight for contractual, totaling twenty-eight, four seventy-five. And from the budget allocated of thirty-six thousand dollars, we thought that it would be useful to start protecting some of our ash, even though the Emerald Ash Bore is only about nineteen, eighteen or nineteen miles away in St. Paul. It happens that we have, as a resident in Hudson, the gentleman who runs the Emerald Ash Bore program next door in Minnesota, who I work closely with. And so we have a great deal of expertise, and I've consulted with a great many people and advised the board. And so we're going to hold off on any large-scale treatment of ash trees and only treat, as you see, thirty-five that are ones that we just cannot stand to lose, most of them in Lakefront Park and downtown, and a number of other ones. And so the remaining four thousand twenty-five has yet to be, will be discussed by the Urban Forestry Board in terms of how it might best be utilized. And so at this time, we would like to answer any questions before we move forward with this action plan.
I had one question. The value of seventeen million is based on harvesting value?
No, it's based on really real estate value, what contribution it makes to the value of a property, real estate property. And so generally, on a private lot of average size, the landscape, depending on how extensive it is, large trees, how many large trees, can add anywhere from ten to thirty percent value of that property, real estate value. So it's a, it's really based on real estate and other, you know, determination factors like the species of trees, the age of the tree, if it's located in the right area. It's a system that professional arborists use to put a value on a tree based on those factors. And it's the compensatory value, what would be compensated, what the owner would be compensated if the tree was lost.
Well, I just ask because I know I have an associate who sold off a lot of trees and actually made quite a bit back. So I'm thinking if there's certain trees that need to be harvested and removed, if there is any sort of value to those trees that are harvested.
Absolutely. And you'll note, I kind of glossed over it, but we put a thousand dollars in there on the utilization line to explore some of the options we have to maximize the return on the material that we remove or prune.
Okay.
And this last picture is, of course, of Lakefront Park, the jewel, crown jewel in our park system, and where we want to pay the most attention to the condition of trees and the variety of trees because that's where most residents spend their, you know, time if they're going to go anywhere, and so a lot of attention. And you may have noticed down by the public dock that a double trunk cotton was removed, left a big gap there. I don't know if the stump has been ground yet, but if you take a look at it, you'll see that the center of that is completely hollow. And because those trunks were at an angle, they really posed a risk, a threat to those that were using the dock. Example of a risk tree because it isn't structurally compromised and has a target. So if there are no more questions?
I'd like to thank you for all your work you've done. We consider it a very big asset to our community and commend the council for setting the funds aside to do this program. The other thing is, if you want to contribute and buy a tree, we'll match fund it. So anybody in the audience that would like to buy a tree, it's a good program. And I think Tom is applying right now for the Rotary Club for a grant again this year. I think we just got the April one, Tom. April one is the due date, so we got to make sure we don't miss that.
And I want you to mark your calendars for April twenty-eighth is the Saturday. We'll have our Arbor Day celebration up at Weed Camp Park, one of our newest parks up on the bluff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Switch back to camera, please.
Can I just add a couple things?
Sure.
Because of the lack of snow or the low amount of snow, that actually the Public Works crew has been trimming a lot of trees, especially in the downtown area. I think we have North and South Streets from First to Twelfth completed. And the last couple of days, the guys, the crews have been going east and west in the downtown part of the city. So we've done a lot of work, tree-related work this winter because we have not had the snow, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. A review of the Vine Street feasibility study. Dennis? Dennis?
Maybe a quick question. I do have the report on a flash drive and some photos, but it might take a few minutes to load up, or do you just want to jump into a verbal report? Your pleasure.
Let's load it up.
Load it up.
If you can.
I'll see if it works or not.
Okay.
Mike is here.
It'll help for people at home. It's a big project.
No, it's just a PDF. Sure. As we're working on that, let's move on to the last item in Public Works, and that is a letter from, a consider support letter for the Long Pond sediment issue. Denny, you want to talk about that one? Or is it Tom? Denny's here.
Do you see how he looked at you?
Yeah, okay. Tom, you want to talk about this one? Anybody have a copy for him? Want this one?
Last fall, Denny and I and Jim Schreiber have been working with residents from the Long Pond area, and they've had issues or concerns about sediment that's getting into their water area, the St. Ray River in front of their homes. And at the September 7, 2010 meeting, the common council authorized Denny, Donald, myself, and Jim Schreiber to meet with the local residents. And St. Ray County officials and DNR officials determined future direction regarding the Long Pond sediment issue. The Tamara Whitmer from St. Ray County Land and Conservation Department has acquired one grant to do some soil borings in the Long Pond area. She's asking for the city council support, to draft a support letter so they can acquire another grant from the DNR. So I just wanted to update you that we have been working with that group of people down there, and we are committed to help them, but we said, I said in the letter that we are under no financial obligation, so.
Okay.
How to present this and get your thoughts and see if the council would approve the support letter.
Thought we already did that once, didn't we, on the 7th?
We just authorized that we would be working with them, but now they're asking that we draft a support letter so they can apply for a DNR grant, which is, has to be submitted by, I think, March 6 or something. We won't make the next council meeting, so.
And it's a bigger issue than just a few residents along the river. It's that whole area down there, it's taking runoff from the highway, is that correct? Runoff from different areas that are settling back in that pond?
Lot of it comes from the interstate system, and a lot of it comes from stormwater, Pond number five, which is off of Hagan Street, that actually, a couple of years ago, we actually got in there and dredged some of the sediment out of there so it actually hold some, hold more water before it got into the piping system.
Right. And so that whole area back in there, for a number of years, has just been filling up with sediment. And it used to be that, you know, it was a clear area, and now it's all weeds and all sorts of other stuff. So there's some treatment issues down there. There's a bunch of other issues in there, too, I believe, isn't there, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, the water level has, or, you know, the depth has gotten less, and a couple of years ago, I guess there's a lot of weeds and things down there.
So, you know, it's feeding into the ecological system of the river itself. So I think that we have a, I'd really like to see this supported and see us figure out how do we clean up what we're dumping into the river? So, or what's being dumped in the river from 94 and those other areas.
As long as we don't have a financial obligation at this point, I would support it. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
What is that motion, Marty?
To allow the city to write a letter of support so that they're able to secure a
Any other discussion? Catherine, do you have any comments on that?
No, as long as you, I mean, you may want to make sure there's no obligation on the part of the city in the grant application.
Okay. You want that to come from me or from Tom, or how do you want that? Does it matter? Or from the city council?
I mean, you're saying should it come back to council?
No, no. I said, who should sign the letter? Who should write the letter? Should be signed by, should it be from the common council, from the mayor, from Tom as the director of Public Works?
Mayor would probably be a good one.
Yeah. And you could say it's authorized at the council meeting, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. How are we doing?
Just about ready.
I'll talk about background while I'm, see if I can be multitasking at the same time here. Little bit of history about the Vine Street feasibility report. Back in 2010, council received a report from your previous engineer about downtown storm water and flooding issues. So what, last year, council authorized us to expand upon that report and take the findings from that report and estimate the cost that would be associated with it. This is a copy of a map, and, sorry, it's a little bit small there, from the report from 2010, and is part of our report. Bear with me a minute. Can I get it centered? I'll just keep talking. What this map shows is, that, the report back in 2010 identified several flooding problem areas. Those being an alley between 4th and 5th Street north of Vine, an alley between 6th and 7th Street just north of Vine, Locust Street itself between 1st and 2nd Street, the adjacent block right over here. And also, there was a location identified on 9th Street at Pitt. And that report back in 2010 had four different options, and it recommended option three, which included installing a gravity storm sewer to alleviate the problems in the alley between 4th and 5th, running the storm sewer down Vine Street. Today, the storm sewer runs down Vine Street, heads south on 4th, and then west again down Locust, all the way to the river. And that report recommended running the storm sewer down Vine all the way to the river, disconnecting it on 4th, so there would be less storm water in the storm sewer that ran down Locust. The report also recommended reconstructing Locust Street to get rid of the corridor crown that's in there and help the street carry more water and storm events, and restore the full height of the curb that's been filled in over the years. And as you know, there's been some maintenance issues with the curb on the south side of Locust Street in that area and undermining the sidewalk. So our report expanded upon that one to assign a cost to what the improvements might be for those improvements. And basically, the limits of the project are Vine Street from 1st to 9th, Locust Street from 1st to 2nd, and then storm sewer improvements in the two alleyways I mentioned, including some, possibly some improvements right out here on 3rd and Walnut. By installing storm sewer in Vine, that would also necessitate reconstructing Vine Street. And as part of that, we had worked with Public Works Department. Vine Street is narrower right now between 4th and 9th. And this report recommends widening the street. That isn't necessarily what has to be done if the city so chooses, but to make it consistent on both sides, widen the street approximately five feet, two and a half feet on each side. Those improvements, along with new storm sewer down Vine Street, increasing the size of the storm sewer, lowering it to be able to pick up the storm sewer in the alleys, again, between 4th and 5th, and between 6th and 7th. We have checked with some of the governmental agencies that would be permitting agencies, storm water permitting from the DNR. For one, we are concerned that with some of the new regulations, there would be additional water quality requirements. They do have some, but it doesn't seem significant enough to warrant needing a large retention basin or pond down by the river. Because of the nature of the project, we're not really increasing in previous surface to a significant extent in the length of the project, and we would just put some underground large treatment, basically a large treatment manhole for treating stormwater sediment before it deposited into the river. Part of the other improvements then, again, on Vine Street would be reconstructing Vine Street from 1st to 9th, and widening, like I mentioned, between 5th and 9th, or 4th and 9th. Reconstructing Locust Street between 1st and 2nd, excuse me, between 2nd and 3rd, I think I've been saying 1st and 2nd. Locust Street between 2nd and 3rd. And there is some storm sewer that was televised as part of the Public Works effort, and I mentioned before, there was some small displacement, so there'd be some minor storm sewer repair in the Locust Street storm sewer. As part of the project, too, then, water main would be improved in Vine Street. There's a few places where there is, there is none. It's served on cross streets for residences or other businesses on 1st and 2nd. And as long as the street was being reconstructed, the water department would make upgrades to the water main. Mainly sizing, the water main itself isn't in bad condition, but it can duly upsize just to serve the area better. So aside from that, some other issues that are unique to the project, Vine Street, obviously a very busy street, collector roadway in the city. We were proposing in the report to get it done in one year to close the street and have some detour routes. There's several different detour routes that could be investigated. And again, that's a ways down the road, but... This is a typical section of what Vine Street would look like down on the bottom. Today, it's, in some areas, it's 36 feet wide, in other areas, it's 31 feet wide. That's why we talked about widening it. There's fairly large boulevards today and sidewalks on both sides, some private utilities that are in that corridor. The AT&amp;T has two large conduits, which basically serve the entire north part of the city of Hudson, as well as large parts of the town of Hudson. They would work with the city if that project were to go forward, to combine those conduits and relocate them, hopefully in the boulevard, to allow the city to have more space for the new water main that would be going in. There's also a four-inch gas main down the north side of the road, just behind the curb. That would be most likely relocated under the sidewalk on the north side. So there's quite a bit of infrastructure in that corridor that would need to be coordinated with. XL Energy also has overhead power poles down the south side, so there would be some, either protection of those in place, or if the road were widened, have to relocate those back closer to the sidewalk. Kind of the key point, and I'm not going to pull the chart up because it's kind of small, it's in your report, but the financing, cut to the chase. The overall estimated project cost is about $3.1 million. And we had brought the, this report to Public Works last month and had a fairly aggressive assessment approach, but looking at the city's, verifying the city's current assessment policy, part of the project would be intended to be assessed for residents facing Vine Street and those on Locust, the businesses on Locust between 2nd and 3rd. And the city's assessment policy just includes the reconstruction of the curb and gutter and sidewalk if that's necessitated, not the actual street cost itself. So we're looking at possible assessments on Vine Street of about $15 per linear foot for curb and gutter. So what that means is if you're a typical residential lot, which is approximately 60, 66 feet wide, you'd be looking at about a $1,000 assessment for the project. And if you have driveways that need reconstructing, that'd be an additional $1,500 to $2,500, depending if that was required. The, because of the street being wider on Locust Street and having adjacent sidewalks, that's about a $56 linear foot assessment. Or for a typical business that, I'll say typical being one, that's a 25-foot wide front, that's about a $1,400 assessment. So fairly minimal assessments based on the large scope of the project. And broken down, the project is about $2.8 million, $2.85 million on Vine, and about $300,000 on Locust. One other thing to mention is those two projects are related, but they're not, they could be done individually. Again, the storm sewer is going to be disconnected at 4th between the two roadways, but the actual improvements to Locust are mainly the street cross-section itself and the sidewalks. So other than that, the tentative schedule is included in the report, and that's an optimistic schedule, assuming the project would go forward today. But you can, it can be adjusted accordingly, so it's more of a scope of how long a project like this would take. AT&amp;T, with their conduit, said they need about a year to design and then relocate. So you're looking at about a year minimum from the time the council, should the council decide to move the project forward, which will then allow for time for design and permitting and coordination with other agencies.
And Dennis, this does include the intersection of Vine and 2nd Street?
Yes, it does. And it includes it to the way it was previously designed, a concrete intersection, and other improvements to the returns and some signal improvements if they're warranted.
Is this separate from this, from all the work that we'd have to do with a stormwater utility, or is this something that was included in that first bill that we just saw earlier today? I mean, was this...
This is separate.
Was this price not in at all? Because a lot of this is similar.
Right. That other more general cost estimate was for existing structures. This is separate.
This is completely separate on top of...
For the most part, there might be a few, you know, overlapping, but this is separate from that. And the stormwater utility could be used for part of it if there, if this council wanted to investigate special assessment districts under the stormwater utility.
And this work, would it sure, would it, I mean, this would assure that there would be no more flooding downtown, or?
I'll never say that.
Well, this whole reason why this got brought up, because...
Yeah. Today, there's a...
That they're getting flooded. I mean, that was why Lee pressed to have this looked at.
Absolutely. And we, I went back in my records, and I mean, it's been getting worse since 1998 when we first started, started seeing, you know, things happening, at least in my neighborhood and a neighborhood up, so it's...
Right now, that...
We've been kind of talking about it for a decade, you know?
I know, it's a $3 million price tag, so I'm just trying to...
Well, it's worth a decade to talk about that, right?
Right now, that storm sewer in that alley goes north, and then east, and then north again, up 5th Street. And that storm sewer backs up in large storm events, and that's why the water doesn't get out of there.
Now, the email I dropped you earlier about 9th Street, does this then solve the 9th Street flooding problems as well?
No, in that 2010 report, it was, 9th Street storm sewer was looked at, but it was determined that one option would be to disconnect the storm sewer that comes down Vine Street and then heads north up 9th. But that would not alleviate the problem because there's undersized storm sewer in 9th once you get north of Pitt. So that report recommended that's a separate standalone project, and this report does not address that.
I think if I'm, if I'm right, Tom, didn't we bolted down the, what are those? They kept blowing off.
Manhole cover.
Yeah, we bolted down the manhole covers, they wouldn't blow off anymore because there's so much pressure coming out of them. And that's on 9th, isn't it?
That's on 9th, at the intersection of...
We'll do all this, and we still got flooding downtown, is what I'm hearing.
No, this, this is supposed to help alleviate the flooding issues in the alleys and Locust.
But not 9th Street?
Not 9th Street.
But if you disconnected the one coming off of 9th, you're still going to reduce some flow.
There would be an incremental improvement, but I, I didn't analyze their modeling, but I believe they would still be surcharged and blowing the manhole cover off at 9th and Pitt.
But it does solve the, I mean, we're literally, you can, you can boat down, down Locust Street here. It gets just crazy.
It, I don't know if you mentioned it, a small, I don't know what portion of it, water and sewer and those utilities would contribute to a portion of 3.1.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right.
So what percentage are our street, how do we rate Vine Street? Tom, do you, is Vine Street one or five as far as a rating on our street?
I don't know, the economy has to say three to four.
You're correct, Tom, it's a three. On the city's 1 to 10 scale, three being at that level where you can try to do milling and overlaying, and two being where you need full reconstruction, so it's in between. I had some pictures, but... I had some pictures, but you all know what Vine Street looks like.
Yep.
So does that mean, I mean, if you look at the neg, the normal degradation of the streets, does that mean that in a year or two, when we would have the pieces together here, Vine Street would need to be rebuilt?
Short answer, yes. Probably looking at two to four years, Vine Street would go from a three to a two.
And how many other streets do we have that are in worse condition than Vine Street? I think that's, where does this fit on our, on our, our study that we've done? I mean, are we jumping this one ahead of other streets as far as the condition of the road? This is a main road that we have high, heavy traffic on.
That's what we've been trying to do, was try to get it to be in our Twitter, where we stop first, but...
Well, it's got to be one of the main, main regs and drags in town. Hmm. Okay?
Incredible.
We have the Wisconsin project scheduled for this year, correct? Wisconsin Street?
Thirteen and fourteen.
No, the, the actual construction of Wisconsin will be the end of fourteen or fifteen, based on the state's budget.
Still waiting that long for that money?
Cannot start even the design process till at least January, or July 1 of this year. If you, if you don't want to jeopardize 80% funding.
Okay.
So we're, is there, and there's no funding source outside?
No, we try to identify, I mean, the city has used up most of its allotment for the federal funding with the Wisconsin Street project, and the other, there are a few other options from the state or the county. I mentioned those in the report, but they're, they're small in magnitude.
Yeah, I was kind of seeking out something bigger with that question, so...
Would you think we could re-take the Wisconsin money to the Vine Street project? Would that be almost impossible?
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be easy, but Wisconsin Street obviously needs it as bad, if not more.
It does. We have to make it, we're trying to make, I don't know if we can do both of them.
But the, there'd be, would it be about the same amount, though? It wouldn't be 80% of the total project?
It could be up to 80%, but I, like I said, the city would be way ahead of its allotted allotment.
But we had about 500 for Wisconsin, was it?
800,000, I think.
Was it eight?
It's in the 500 to 600 range, as far as the 80% share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would help on this project, if you had that money on here.
I can ask a question, if you like, of the Wisstock representatives.
I don't know if anybody else...
Yeah, I'd be curious to find out.
Everybody, now we're shaking our head, no, no?
Let a sleeping dog lay.
I don't rock the cradle when you get a grant, that's all I'm saying, so, but...
Okay, any other questions? So you're, you're not going to make a guarantee for us that we're going to have no flooding on Fourth and Fifth and...
No, I can't predict the weather. It will...
What percentage is, is it a result of the amount of rain, and what percentage is it, that we don't have a big enough, are we putting a larger storm pipe in?
We're putting larger storm sewer in. Storm sewer is typically designed to only carry a 10-year storm event.
Uh-huh.
A storm that has a likelihood of happening once every 10 years, and then the rest of the stormwater is typically conveyed on the surface. You just have a funnel situation here on Locust where half the, a lot of the storm water from the bluff comes down, so unless you want to design a storm sewer to about two or three times its normal size, then, and, and pay for that cost, then you alleviate and get more of the stormwater underground.
So what I'm trying to ask you, if you don't, we're, we're still going to have flooding problems on Locust Street.
You'll still have water on the, on the surface, but the intent is that it will not be obviously up against the buildings, and hopefully it won't be above the curb line.
So a 10-year storm event is, how many inches in, roughly?
A couple inches, over a four, five, six-hour period.
Okay, so the storm that happened last year, was that considered a 10-year?
That was considered off the charts.
Okay.
We only had three of them that last year. I mean, at least in our, in our neighborhood.
Right, but I'm saying, if we're putting in pipes that are going to handle a 15-year storm event, but this one's off the charts, then those pipes aren't going to matter anyways in this situation, is what I'm getting at.
I would, I would disagree with that. If you took, if you took the water down even four inches out of the two and a half feet we got, less would have flooded. And for the, for the normal rainstorms, you won't get, every time it rains, it won't back up.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening, at least in our neighborhood, is that every time it rains, you got a foot of water. And so the question is, can you take that down in a normal rain to get a normal 10-year? That'd be a lot better. And I would, I would assume in your studies, you found that you are undersized in a lot of different areas.
Specific, well, not too badly in Vine, but that stormwater goes north, so it's some of that storm sewer. So we'd be disconnecting it from going north and bringing it out to Vine.
I don't think everybody, anybody expects a guarantee, but just a little more normal.
The intent of doing, designing any storm sewer system is to keep water out of buildings, and you're, it's expected to, the street is designed to convey stormwater. In the several scenarios in the city, there's just too much stormwater, and the storm sewers themselves aren't in adequate size, it's some of the direction. And there have been, call it coincidence, or call it what you want, there's been very large frequency storm events in the last 10 years. Like I said, that one last year was, was over 100-year event, I don't know if they ever measured it.
Well, in 2005 was when, at least in my neighborhood, at least four or five people, we just got a couple of 20-yard dumpsters and just dumped the stuff out of the garages because, and where they were stored in the basements, it just, it was as bad or worse than this one, so...
So in summary, that's, that's the, the details of that, those proposed improvements, should you decide to move forward with them. And again, the cost is not desirable, but it's, based on that scope of work, starting with the report from 2010, we didn't redo the stormwater modeling, assumed that was adequately done, and just came up with the costs, starting from there.
Okay, council. What do you think?
Seems like we only need about $15 million to take care of the problems that we have, so that shouldn't be...
Just 15 million.
Be any issue for us.
Thinking more like 20.
I think it's tonight's problems.
I think it's good that we've, we know the scope of what we're looking at, and so as we go into capital decisions, that we keep all the stuff in mind, it's necessary.
Okay.
About fun.
Nope, thank you.
Do we need a motion to accept the report? Or not?
I don't think so.
Okay, next item. We have a new business, a disallowance of a claim from Gene, is that telling us something?
No, Randy pulled Public Safety.
You had pulled number four.
Okay, number four, recommendation to install a stop sign on Seventh and Malloo Drive. Mr. Morissette.
Well, I'm really heavily weighed to, talking to some residents down there, they don't think it's necessary. I also would agree with the staff recommendation that it doesn't really qualify for a stop sign there. All these voting no, it just doesn't make sense for that area, and I've lived down there for 10 years at one point, so...
Okay. Anything, Safety Committee, anything?
Well, it does meet stop sign policy, may not qualify in the eyes of someone who's driving, but it meets the stop sign policy that we have. We've explored various options. Someone, the original request was a mirror. A mirror was, felt that it would not be the right option because our chief of police was worried about vandalism, our head of Public Works was worried that it would be reflective when people are driving. Also, he couldn't find a mirror, or reflective, whatever the term is, it's not a mirror, I understand that, but to, to place on the bridge. Chief Jensen and I sat down, sat down at that intersection for quite some time one day, and yeah, it's slow, there's, it's, there's no, there's not a lot of traffic there, I understand that, but there's, it is, it can be considered a blind intersection when coming over that hill at a high speed, and we're thinking a stop sign would actually slow the car down before crossing the intersection to look for children, or cars, or whatever else is going on there. I mean, it's just more of a precautionary safety measure that we're taking, and as long as it meets the stop sign policy, we voted unanimously in Public Safety to put a stop sign there.
And may I just interject also, under the staff recommendation, our chief safety officer, Marty, Chief Jensen, he recommends that leave the intersection as it currently is. There have not been any reported accidents at this intersection for the past decade, nor any complaints from citizens living in the area.
Oh, that was considered, but there was, there was complaints, there was two citizens that were there that night, so...
Okay, any other issues or comments? Okay, we have a recommendation to install a stop sign on Seventh and Malloo. Is there a motion to approve it or disapprove it, whichever?
We'll move to approve Public Safety's recommendation to install a stop sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
And based on the recommendation, we had discussed it in, in safety, and we talked about what's the possibility of, when you look at the angles that things come together at, at that corner. We did talk about it a lot and felt that this, this would be, based on the complaints and the concerns from the neighbors, would be a good solution, and people are normally stopping there almost anyhow, so it was just kind of reinforcing current behavior.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, now we move down to new business, disallowance of claim on, by Gene Connet Winter, resolution 4-12.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to that resolution number 4-12.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications recommendations from the mayor, I think Devin had put on your, on your, on your desk, the voting record, did you want to make a comment on that, Devin, or?
Well, yeah, just to give you an idea of the voting percentages, we are under 10%, which for a spring primary is fairly typical. You will note that the districts are more even than they were in the past. That is registered voters, as opposed to actual residents, which is what the districts are based on, but ranged anywhere from just under 5% to 15 and a half percent in the various districts. I anticipate we'll have a higher turnout in April, but, as long as I brought that up. Couple, couple of quick things related to that. All registered voters should have received a yellow piece of paper from the city telling everybody where to vote. If you didn't receive one, that means you're probably no longer registered, because it was sent out to everybody that was registered. Some came back for snowbirds that were out of the area, we'll resend those. And if you've moved since the last time you registered, you have to re-register, so if anybody didn't get that letter, they may want to check with us at City Hall, so they can get registered prior to the election, otherwise they'll have to redo it at the polling place.
Okay. There was an open house at the new motel, hotel on Wednesday that we were all invited to, but they delayed it till March 7th. So if you're planning on attending tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, don't go, because it's not going to happen, so... Okay, anything else, Devin?
No, I'm, that's it.
City attorney?
No.
Any older person?
I have some to answer.
Yep.
There's been a rash of thefts of political signs in the last weekend, and our police department has already, has, has been advertising the paper, being worked a lot, and to have to investigate political signs thefts is just something I don't think they want on their plate, so can we not steal political signs, please? Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.